Before they ever said.
All right, it is eight o'clock, we're gonna get started because we have, if you want to go on a tour at nine o'clock of downtown, which would be very helpful, let's go ahead and start out with a roll call. Rebecca is absent today. Today's date is the thirteenth, right. Okay, Fran is here, Marie.
Here.
Dion.
Here.
David Caldwell. You guys, two absences for him, so third one, he's out, so you might want to thank you Dion, who you're gonna get.
I'll pick him anyway.
What?
Not that.
Don't, yeah.
Alright, okay, is that snarky? Okay. Matt is here, Dave Leal. William Leal is not here. I'm here. Um, hello, how are you Victoria? Um, Emily is here, Jeff. Uh, Jeanie.
Here.
Fred and Victoria, okay. Okay, all right, for those of you that just walked in, if you haven't gotten an agenda, I was going to do, I'm gonna send it out through email.
There's an extra one here if someone wants it, because I couldn't.
Okay, if I start going through too fast, just slowing down, because at nine o'clock we have a hard end to it, because normally they have a meeting in here. So we have a lot to cover today. I wanna give my goal for today is to get you with your councilperson, and when we will not have a councilperson with them today, but it is assigned. Um, I want to be talking to them, getting someone organized. Uh, as we go through, we're gonna start off with public comment, do I have any public comment? Now, I thank all the people that think this morning, this is really great. Thank you. Um, what we're gonna do is, I sent you an email, because I made it to save time. And on the query in this, and I asked for, we prioritize, which ones, which five would you like to see us tackle next, when these are complete, okay? These will be completed for probably just a few months. Um, we are gonna tell you then, from this list this morning, we are going to be getting our fifth subgroup, okay? Now, I have some of you wanting to start, because I want to save time. Um, and Victoria, Emily, you need to pick your five, anyone else who can pick five, okay? Okay, so Emily, Victoria, come on over and get your stickers.
Um, Carol, do you have two?
Oh, you have one.
I have one right here. And just put them by, the ones you would like to see more stuff. In my email I talked about zoning transparency, that was from one of our guests that, from one of our guests that came in. Now, it's not in our purview to write zoning law. And so, when we talked to him about it later, you know, he couldn't really define what he meant by zoning transparency. So Fred and I made an executive decision across town, and said, that is really for city staff, and we're not doing zoning. Okay. So. The next part is the selection of the third project. Fred, go ahead and tell us. Which one is gonna be the one we're gonna tackle? Um, while we're down, and then we can start talking with others.
Make sure everybody can see the one on the very bottom, because the fact that it's curled.
Yeah, prioritization. Code enforcement is gonna be our fifth one.
Pardon?
We should take code enforcement, because you have a total.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was like, well, we need to call.
That was smooth. Okay. Before I have you.
Are you taking vacancy or are you taking, um, code enforcement? Because Hyland is peril, and Fred is beautification, and Marie's under noise.
Sure.
All right. Let's go over each one. I'm gonna do Hyland removal. And the reason why we're doing Hyland removal is because some of the buildings that have Hyland on them have been up for ten years plus. And that's one we're detracting from our downtown. If you remember, at the first meeting, I talked about how thirty percent of our downtown first floor buildings are empty. That's not good, and that's just between the fourth and seventh street. That's not good if we want to keep contracting businesses, because Hyland businesses come, if they don't think they're gonna have an ample group of people downtown who's gonna patronize them. You want our downtown to look very lovely, and that we are a vibrant, energetic city.
What are you gonna do, uh, to replace it? Because a lot of those, the city made and bought them up because they looked so bad.
No, the four that are left have taken down their storefronts, and they have not replaced them in ten years. Some of them are half-done, in fact, all of them are half-done.
Can we put a poster on, on there that has the, uh, name of the owner and the length of the car? Everybody knows who, that might be all it takes.
That'll be up to the subgroup.
Inside the malls, they put those big.
Yeah.
So if you want, so if you're thinking as I'm going through these, which subgroup you wanna sign up for, we are only accepting two people per subgroup, okay? We have, you can see we've got what Hyland's, so that's gonna be interesting. Beautification downtown, Fred's business. You're gonna see lights up there, and you're gonna say, well, we are in different tree lights. We have a lot of burned-out lights downtown, that know that we hire our company to take care of this, not taking care of them. We have, um, fixtures that are missing. That's what Fred will be, and his subgroup will be dealing with, making sure that's done. Uh, we have, under that, um, the pop-up park, to make sure that gets done. Uh, flowers, yes, you know, GBA planted a lot of flowers, but already some have died because people aren't taking ownership of watering those flowers. Maybe the subcommittees didn't wanna go out, you know, if you have a flower pot outside your building, it's your responsibility to water it. You know, it's not too hard to do, uh, but make everything look nice. Anything else that they can think of downtown, maybe the Washington on the sidewalk, it's just up here, you know, for the beautification downtown. And not just to do it as a one-time thing, but that should keep it going forever, you know, even after we're gone here.
Maybe through the youth, or through the hours, that could be something that could be a part of that, not, not expecting the business owners, or even if there's a vacancy in front of it, to take care of the flowers, you know, there should be. Somebody set aside that.
Right, but you can't really count on the youth either, you know, the business owner, it, it doesn't take too much tech, he doesn't want to water that flower. Anyway, that's for them to work on though, okay? Vacancy ordinance. Um, that is Dion, I believe, right, the vacant buildings you said. Okay, I'll add your name to that list. Um. That subcommittee is gonna be thinking about what the building owners can do to make their buildings tenant-ready, a lot of them are not tenant-ready yet. Um, I mean, as you know, if you live downtown, two of our buildings, why they have the part of a Hyland taken off and completed, and they look really, really nice. And the committee was coming on board, they got moving over there. So, there's a lot of other buildings that are empty, that do not, that do not present well. That might be what you're gonna be working on, to say, how long do we keep a building empty? When you are looking at your build, when you're, when you're, when you're involved in this project, you're gonna see some of our buildings in the empties since 2005.
And it's called vacancy ordinance, so where is the ordinance?
You will be putting it together.
So there, you know, there's nothing that exists, is what you're saying?
No, we have focus questions, that you're gonna be looking at before you just dive into this, so don't worry. I'm just trying to give you a brief overview of what each one is, so if you think you're interested in that, that's the one, so I know the rule. Noise ordinance. Um, we hear all the tiny people, yeah, it's too noisy, they want something done about, um, a lot of parks that go down Main Street. Whatever, whatever it takes, you and your sub, and subcommittee will talk about, and Marie's hanging that one up. What else have noise ordinance that you wanna do? Now, allow, I'll say this up here again, and then Rebecca is gonna be in charge of code enforcement. Code enforcement would entail. What I just. What I just, yeah, I'm here.
That's the shit.
Cleanup, graffiti, people living in cars in the alleyway, you know, we have a whole group of people living in cars in the alleyway between, uh, Sixth and Martin Street. Signage. Any other code enforcement that you think. What that means is, we have it on the books, but it's not being enforced. So, and then if you think it's something that you wanna add to code enforcement, you can do it. Now, does that mean that what you write as an ordinance is ready to get passed? Maybe, maybe not, but it is a starting point, because when you write it up in a report, you're going to then present it to all of us to listen to, to tweak, to add to it. And then when you are complete, we go to council with it. And your councilperson, or one of you in the subgroup will be the one to do the lead and do the project on it. But we, at that point, as a council, will go, whether we wanna send this forward to, to staff, to adopt a policy that deals with that, so we don't have these different issues, um, in, in downtown. Does that make sense? Any questions?
Do you want me to explain why street vending isn't up there?
Yes, uh, in my email, as I told you, and then we're the, for our guests here, street vending is going to be down with Marie in July.
July tenth.
July tenth, yeah, I wanna keep saying.
Well, I'm about to doubt this, it comes before the council.
Right.
It'll be the first hearing, where I'm sure we'll be giving direction to staff, so it's gonna come before us a few times.
We were told it was July tenth, then August seventh, and nothing would be passed, or whatever, till September. That's what was told at the meeting.
Probably, because those are worse than reading. So, any questions that I can answer right now? Or is this clear as one?
Another question.
Yes.
So on the people that you missed, you missed two times in a round?
Third time, third time you are requested. So, at this time, I'd like all of you, you know, whether in time, public, it's all take longer than ten minutes, uh, go up there and please sign up for one of the five, um, subcommittees. Once the two slots are filled, you have to go on to a second choice. We won't have three or more on the second committee yet. It's you, it's two people and one councilperson, okay? All right, so go ahead.
So we could.
Oh, there's one, there's five, okay, the five that I just went over, Hyland removal, how many people are there?
Well, there should only be ten.
Well, there should be, there's ten people, okay, the ten people that are here are the ones that are five. Gonna go do it, you had first choice, less competition.
But then also, I mean, talking on the vacancy thing, I mean, there needs to be a little more detail on some of these, uh.
But Jeanie, uh, Jeanie.
Yeah.
Jeanie, that's up to your councilperson and you, and some.
Yeah, but I wanna sign up, and then later you're like, oh, shit.
All right, which one do you have? Which one do you want, and to have more clarification of?
On the vacancy, like I brought that up, you know, getting the building owners ready, I'm looking to see if there's any state, if there's any SV law, is there, I know you're saying.
That's the subgroup.
There's already ordinance on the city books that I think that sunsetted with seismic, uh, ordinance that was there, and it could be reenacted or, or modified, obviously.
All right, you know what, Jeanie? Wait, 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 let's, let's, let's jump, let's jump over to the focus questions, because maybe that's gonna help you. I was gonna do this when you had your subgroups, but that's okay. Maybe it helps, it'll help you.
Let's talk to the council.
Redline it, just start it.
We don't wanna have ordinance.
You know, as a little aside, your council members, the people that you have selected, would you please call them up today and ask them if they're interested? If not, let's get a replacement immediately, so the subgroups have somewhere.
Mine are here, good going, guys.
Who got Jeff?
I thought you went.
No, I have Dion.
I did.
But you did.
I'll call him too. Hey, look, I'm not a babysitter for these people.
Yeah.
And I have no problem just getting rid of them.
Remember, they need, they're, they're absent.
Well, I'm gonna call them today and tell them, I'm gonna replace them.
Have rid anybody who wants, because two of them are upstairs. Okay, and Loretta is who's, oh, that was forgotten. Alrighty, focus questions. When you get into your, into your subgroup. Think of a focus question that's going to create a solution to your problem, so like, let's say vacancy ordinance. The three of you would sit down and say, okay, what question would apply to the vacancy ordinance? How do we make building owners have their buildings ready? I'm just throwing this out, you can change it any way, okay? If that's your focus question, then your whole project is surrounded by that. Okay, because the idea is, I mean, don't get me wrong, if your building is ready, it's out of your control if you don't have anyone coming to lease it. But I can name many buildings downtown that are not business-ready right now. Those are the ones we are wanting to direct, okay? Then, after you have your focus question, all your research should be centered around on what can be the best feasible answer to getting the problem solved. Gather your information next, start with the city of buildings, because we might have a code, we might have an ordinance that deals with, with how long a building can be empty. If you call, and, you know, unfortunately, this group where Sharon's gonna get, you know, kind of run of this, if you would, the councilperson would contact Sharon, and say, Sharon, do we have, uh, an ordinance that deals with vacant buildings? She's either gonna say yes or no. Okay, if she says yes, she'll say, you know, can I have a copy of your work, can I go to find it? Because that's where your subgroup should start. You read over that ordinance, and you say, is it heat, is it strong? Oh, this is really a good, strong ordinance, and why aren't we enforcing it? Maybe that's what your committee's gonna work on. If she says, no, we don't have anyone addressing it, then you're gonna have to do your homework outside of the city of buildings. So, maybe, not maybe, each one of you would, would contact two cities, and talk about what cities you're to contact, so you're not all calling the same city. And say, and ask them, do you have a vacancy building ordinance? What is it, do you have a copy of it? And then you come back together, and what I would suggest for the council members, put timelines on this. Because in office, when we come back again, I wanna hear, we all wanna hear about what you have found out, where are you in this process? So you come back and say, okay, this is what I found out from Podesta, this is what San Francisco did, this is what Oakland's doing, and this is what we feel we should adopt. You might wanna adopt pieces of it, or whatever, but you're gonna be putting together an answer to your focus question for us to hear in office, okay? And then uh, from number three, from the information gathered, I said, write a maximum one page, you know, one big, big document. Where it's your summary of what you found out, and what you would have your subgroup, a subgroup take back to council. Because ideally, in September, when we meet, it's, we're gonna be carrying from all of you, your final product. And when we say, you know, yeah, that was, hey, that's really good, you covered all your bases, at the, at the next council meeting, we will be asked, the Jimmy, to allow you to present to council.
September or October?
Um, it depends, you know, if it's September, you guys are ready to go.
She can't answer that. I'm just trying to get a timeline.
Because she can't, nobody can answer when something.
All we can do, yeah, all we can do is tell Jimmy, hey, these three subgroups are ready to come and present.
Just trying to plan.
Present, you know, make, hopefully, October, you guys.
Sometime Q4 is what you're hoping. Q4 is what you're hoping.
Yeah, exactly. And then, once it's presented to council, you know, council will listen to it, and then, if they decide, yes, this is something good that we need to pursue. The, the councilperson will, will ask for it to be put on the agenda, the council will vote on it, and then, all your notes and information, I anticipate will be given over to staff to help them out. You do not want staff starting from scratch on this, if you've done the late work, it helps them out to be able to draft something. Now, they might change it a little bit, they might add to it, but at least we've given them our research of what we found. Um, last month, I had said that I anticipate that if all this is done in October, November, we take those months off. You know, if we don't have anything else to do, I don't wanna starting a new project in November and December with the holidays, because you're all gonna be busy, and you're not gonna get it done. And plus, a lot of, um, you know, the cities will be doing little closures for the holiday season, so you won't be able to get the information you need. I would like to see us start fresh in January, tackling the next five lines that we've just prioritized this month. Does that sound there? Okay, so, any questions?
I do. Uh, you're talking about things that would go before council, those would just be the vacancy and the noise, right? What other things are you saying have to go before?
Hyland removal, I'm gonna suggest an ordinance for that group, because I don't want you to really notice that.
And then just, just so everybody's conclusion, I know you know, but things don't go before, things don't get on a council agenda unless the council majority.
Right.
Asks that it get on an agenda, so just because this committee wants it on an agenda doesn't mean.
That's right.
It gets on an agenda, so this is something that, you know, even council members struggle with, so when Jeanie's trying to get her timeline, we all try to do that. It doesn't, yeah, yeah, it doesn't work that way, about a majority of the council pushing.
And, and you know, once it's passed on to staff, maybe if we're asking for an ordinance, you might not see it until next spring. But at least, we are showing that we are accomplishing something, and we, and we can, you know, encourage nicely for it to come out sooner, because it's a necessity. Because when I look up there, the five that you selected, they're, they are all necessities, and we're gonna move our downtown forward. And, so, does that help all of you in your minds, where you pick your subgroups? Okay, so. We've all got pens with you, so just go ahead and, one at a time, or, you know, you go. Yeah, and just pick who you want to, you know.
Not food, the topic, yeah.
Are you ready?
No, I'm not. Doesn't matter, it's not like everybody can be that one time.
No, but it sounds like you're more close to interested in vacancy, you know?
It's not as simple as it sounds.
I didn't say it's not as simple.
That's why you're interested, you know, trying to plan before you start signing that.
Are you already missing something too?
I, at first.
Oh, what do you want?
It's amazing, because you know, maybe it's a council project, so it's, why not just share, specifically to deal with other? It's maybe to be, uh, hot topics here, so we don't, so it's a major, yeah, I think, I really despise, you know, this, with, with someone who talks, they're not, they're front, they need to practice. Turn to glass and music, and just leave, you know, they're sitting outside, they're using plastic, while others are, you know. Not gonna, or even just someone trying to eat, it could literally happen. For example, maybe Alex or, you know, his friends are taking theirs out down that side. And if it wouldn't have the traffic, it's not just, don't worry, I didn't, Jeanie, I forgot, Lucy's at the beach Saturday, right, just sitting outside, just driving down there, it's not just good. I mean, you're not gonna do anything about the noise of a car, you know, muscle cars, but that isn't just moving, the ones that are parked.
But that isn't just moving, the ones that are parked. It's like people are just, and I know that they was, it's so hard to, I don't know what's supposed to happen. I just, I can't remember.
Okay, yeah. I know a lot of cities mitigate.
Well, I mean, at least one. We'll check with her if she wants to do it. Which she does.
Typically get the left.
Okay, yeah.
We have more of our people missing, so here's what we're going to do. Replace her to get those names over to Marie for the noise ordinance, okay?
Wait, I'm sorry.
What, Deon, Deon needs to replace his two people. Well, they said, yeah, because that'll be, they haven't shown up twice around the show.
Well, she's going to bring somebody to talk to us tonight.
Oh, okay.
You know Sylvia Rurchardt now?
Is she a, is she a business owner or building owner?
She's very involved in downtown.
See, this is the problem. We made our, at council, we approved a building and business. That doesn't mean that once we've exhausted all the building and business owners in downtown, we can't get two people. Then we're going to reach out to others. Because I know Frank really wants to be on. I know, um, you know, Dina wants to be on. Sandra Escobar really wants to be on. We've got people willing, but we really want to get that buy into the building business owners first. And then, but keep, you know, keep her in mind.
Well, does anyone ask Tommy Bowles?
If some, yeah, if, it's, you know, if someone wants to ask her, that's perfectly okay. I think she was asked and she said no.
That's why I'm asking if someone did ask her.
I think, don't quote me, but I thought someone told me that she was asked and she said no. But that doesn't mean we can't ask her, yeah. If, you know, if you know her really, you know her really well.
I don't use my space much.
Yeah, so, you know, throw it out to her again and see if she'd ask her if she wanted to come on.
Well, you should say it quite like that, we don't know yet.
Right, and I don't know if she's going to ask.
Yeah, I think one person's definitely going to replace them. Are you going to talk to Will today?
No, I was ready, like, for a reason.
Okay, let's get into subgroups.
Carol, sorry, just, it's good to ask, but ultimately the councilman needs to talk to the individuals that, um, if we got any new members. Ask them from the council.
Oh, yeah, that's true. And like, if we're, I won't do anything.
Yeah, right, with you ask her and tell her.
Unless Deon tells you, yes, ask her, then you go ahead and do it. You, you and Deon were.
Did anyone here ask Tommy initially to be on the committee?
I have no.
So I might just be.
I just went straight to you guys.
Okay, I'm just curious as to. I remember Rebecca's absence, so she might have, I can ask her. Um, but anyway, okay. Um, here's what we're going to do. Let's go ahead and line up into different groups here in the room. Um, Pyne, let's meet over here. And that's David and Jeanie, certification of downtown line spread, you've got Matt and you have Fran. So where would you like to meet with that? Okay, vacancy ordinance. Uh, Deon, you have Acoria and Emily, where would you like to meet with your group? Let's come back at quarter to nine in case there's any questions that pop up, okay? So, my group over here.
Nobody wanted to be in your group?
Or you can, right now, just go with anyone.
You feel like that kid when they're picking sides for teens?
Okay, we're not.
Morning.
How are you?
Good. Who's the person you, uh?
Tony Bowles, she owns the Neon Exchange.
Oh, okay.
And she's pretty, um, she owns the building and the business. And she's like, really, sort of fully involved in the community.
Okay, uh, check, check with her and if she wants to do it, have her call back.
I know Rebecca and Aster, I'm a little shocked that no one had Aster. But I will ask, she has, she's been walking on it, she might be interested because she's pretty.
There's a lot of people involved in downtown, it's hard to ask you.
Yeah, yeah, she's just really, she's kind of a rich chick. She's had a lot of great ideas.
So what do you think about a vacancy ordinance?
I was looking, and the one that the city of Gilroy had was back in 2012. And that's so close to code publishing. So I could read through that, seven years. But what if there was like some sort of fee of the building set empty that were sent out? That was the point to get back from the city. The city's losing the sales tax.
Yeah, and some of these business owners, their buildings have been empty forever. And they're not even aggressively trying to get attendance. It's like they're just using a text. And, um, I think we can check with some other cities, see how they've dealt with it.
Well, that's one type.
The city in the past has, uh, tried penalties. But then the council always lets them slide. And that's something that, um, I can deal with the council on the, uh, whatever we do. We've got to be serious.
Most of the parking spaces are actually much harder to keep downtown.
And then they just, you let them go through. But that isn't what we can do. Um, and.
Certainly, what I'm saying is, is that probably we need to figure out like, there's something that happens in downtown. Because a lot of them are sued by the ashtray business owners during the closing times.
And then from my, the reason why I'm interested in this is because, I think a lot of reasons. Because there's like a difference between like, there's a study on like, what's a lot of.
But outside of that, you can put a lot of.
Just putting everything on the business over to. So that's a big thing for me is I, I feel like the reason why we don't have more of a thriving downtown is because all of this is on the business right now. So then, even if they get a rent break, they get like an escrow, then they have this huge payment and then their rent goes back and then they're not, you know, so they have like these huge liabilities and they can't support it. So I, you know, I would like to figure out a way to make it, try to. So the property owners who have their building, two codes.
Yeah, anything that I want to do is if you're towards the property owner.
Yeah, and so that's kind of, that's my angle, is not just to get them, the, the properties built, but also have them, because they're just, I, I lodge on these business owners. So we want businesses to commit to Gilroy. But then it's like, okay, great, they're going to Gilroy. But then three years later, when their real plan is done, that are they going to go under? Because they have so much expense from all of the stuff that they've done to this business, this property owner, building. You know, and so like, that's kind of where, that's what I'm going to try to, I guess it's going to be on my focus. On what have other cities done in terms of, um, like this safety cushion for businesses coming in in terms of property owners taking the harness on, or making their stuff, you know, feels like, when I moved into my building on Sixth Street, the middle of the building was literally falling into the ground. And here's nothing to keep me, to protect me as a business owner from having to take that on. Because my landlord was like, oh, we have a piece of town. And it's like, at least that shouldn't be a protection to the city, there should be some sort of protection. In terms of, 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 of building to be safe, businesses, nobody listens. Um, I ended up arguing with the head of the hand that they came for it, but it was huge. I mean, it took us like ten minutes to figure that out. And I think that's crazy.
Oh, I was thinking, pardon me, I was like, there's two eight twenty each, buddy.
Yeah, I was, they didn't think they were going to win in the place next to them. I've been trying to get them to tell me about the, I've been trying, the same owner.
They're not.
You know, talk about like what they're going to do in front of the building up to Code. So one way, in that place, it's meant to do avenue.
Which place is that?
The one right next to me.
But it doesn't solve your parking issue, you still have parking in one way. I guess if you take more space, like I said, it gives you another five feet maybe.
Because I was, oh, was it? Close, started with the right. It was during COVID.
Oh, yeah, right now, right, you have a, you have a table alongside, and so you park there.
And she had two. Yes, really. Oh, maybe it was someone, because someone was telling me, because COVID had gone down. So, but when I saw it, the first time I had already closed, someone had made a proposal. But I've been asking them since 2021 about the building.
From city to residence.
No room, it's like, I've been trying to get them offers, I've been trying, they don't want to do any permits. So they're like, no, yes, and so, and she was aware of it. I mean, I'm, I'm sure. No, for, yeah. And they have their sales tax up. So property adds to, yeah, he'll be at our. Because I'm so concerned with doing, smoking, throughout the track. And they have their question. They had a current sign, but it's, they're not, like, they don't know. Like, I've been in there two times, it'll not easily break through some of the cracks. And then to get it up to, it's a disaster.
Yeah, I think the property owner should be responsible for bringing that some purposes, at least.
The ADA, because that's like, the ADA, kind of, the ADA stuff is, like, that is all there is to look tenant as well as making everything. Which, which is to be worked out. Sorry, I'm sorry about it. It's something like, if you're going to use a different, something like, that's actually happened. But I love, in working, especially with their doors and stuff like that. So I was starting, the, what, current, not current, city of Gilroy, calling starters. And so, and then, do we want to pick five cities that we want to pick? Right, and, and sure, I feel like we need to be in communication between now and August. To be, because I don't know how many cities are, I don't know, if we just pick five, like, maybe they're not. So whether that's one way for you or the property, I guess we do.
I'll check with Christine at Motherland, see what they do.
Cruising is defined by.
Trying to think of other cities. So I know Sarah just feels having a huge vacancy issue, but I feel like they're not agreeing.
Yeah, you want to go with cities that are similar to us.
So there is no noise, uh, like, to, from people in residence who are having city noise that's. Right, and they say in general.
Even, I don't know, I was just, it was just to look at, uh, as well, because they have a vacancy issues. Past, so. I know, and this is like France.
I'll, I'll call Hollister too, because they don't seem to have a public issue.
Yeah, Hollister, and I was thinking maybe we'll pass up too, ask one of us if they don't.
Yeah.
The thing that I was concerned is about music. And there's no, I heard came up, like live bands or this.
It's all shared down the hill. No, no. Just within the last five years.
Well, each of us calls two cities. You know, and if they have something that, that sounds like, um, we should, should look into, get a copy of it. Because they email you a copy of the ordinance.
From the, from the OCA, does you get all that, all that feedback too? No, no, not that feedback, all the requests.
Maybe you check them out.
It'll be crazy, it'll be, it'll be crazy requests in, in city.
I tried to use your, I tried to have my, so, so I couldn't shoot that as a question. Yeah, so I'll take Fresno and Paso. Um, I might, I might also reach out to.
The fair amount of time I've got.
Are you going to, did you say you're going to Hollister?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to do city of Gilroy, Oakdale, and reach out to Tommy.
I want to see us put a sign on Hollister.
Did they put a sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did. It was a interesting experience, like a process, because they like had to stop opening it up because.
Some city council member went over there and told them to stop.
Yeah, because they didn't need the proper company or something. It was like, very dramatic, I love Hollister, so.
I love business in Hollister, it's different.
Yeah, I think so. I've been to Hollister a couple times last week, didn't take my daughter until one of my clients. Oh, nice, okay. Looks good with your. I think the surprise looking at the building is like the. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know, so Lily's doing like a giant march, right?
I like it also, it's kind of simple, but it's nice.
Well, we all have a little, I don't know if they would outtake the, the, where we put the street.
Uh-huh.
We have a couple of poles downtown already that can pass.
Yeah.
And I could do Monterey. Happy to show you Monterey, for us.
And we want to know if they have a, a vacancy, like, five of them together.
Was it a couple like that?
And I can ask my husband, he is, he is. Down there, he knows.
It depends, if you get Daytona type situations, yeah, that's a one off thing.
Because I used to work in, I worked in Monterey for a long time, my business was there. And they had, I'm thinking about it now, they have a lot of vacancies for a long time. So I'm wondering if they, maybe, that would be interesting to see what the.
A big section.
If there was, because there was a lot of.
These kinds of things, I think should all be allowed.
Second question, if they do.
It's part of the vibe of going on the cruising thing, that's why it's.
Yeah, because it's not.
It's not same child, it's not set up, it's not a date or whatever. And then it goes down to enforcement, and then just basically making an example of a few people and letting people know, maybe there's signage, right? That has to go up and to make sure that some people have knowledge.
Um, yeah, I'm curious, I, I'm.
Sure. It's just difficult.
It's going to be down the chamber as well?
Yeah, can we do the first weekend tour? Because I'm going to be, I'm like, really slammed for the next three weeks, because I will take a tour. If we do the first weekend tour, I would, yeah, I'm going to be there, we can be in the gallery, you know.
When is your business?
I have a gallery called Bo To, um, which is next to, the Neon Exchange, next to Coachella's. And then I have my tax, got this to back. And then I have Sixth Street, Third Street, so. So you're thinking like July sixth? Like, yeah, just the first week, I'm only in Gilroy Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Okay, are you doing any sort of vacation time for July? So July sixth.
Well, my daughter's making me pay for them to go to Ireland.
Are they going?
Yeah.
I know, she mentioned it in the June fall. Yeah, we're thinking about it.
Yeah, she told me last night, Dad, I need the deposit.
All of it, June fifteenth, yeah, yeah. So I just, I have to leave, my kids have someone that's a school in Hollister, so I have to leave here by Tuesday. Do you want to do like a ten a? Yeah.
Yeah, downtown, downtown, it's downtown.
Yeah, I think that there is.
I, I think it's mine, ten resident.
Are you going to?
Yeah.
So vacancy ordinance check in.
And it's raining.
People were laughing, like, would you go to Teresa? I have like six different facilities, I guess. About Seventh Street, so it's the M L S Sixth Street, Art Studios. Studios, or.
If someone did, they are kind of decibel. Like, I, I worked in the city once, for me, there was a website, and I, I was a city official from my.
That's true. So, the votes probably.
So that's a time.
I think so, that's a. The I four, the other side.
I B E L.
The E. I know you mentioned, uh, setting up like a lot, so we're off to the. We're not closing down that Seventh Street. But it makes sense to just have cars there.
So, that's, that's easy to find.
In the past.
Parking, forcing the person.
Just call us.
I think if, if this group is successful, and in general, is it is successful with downtown, there's going to be code enforcement people who specialize in all of the things that happen.
Yeah, I think my daughter's, we're setting up one driver, she's available.
Oh, okay.
I think once we're more than it's around.
Big day, we always have fourteen. Oh, yeah, because I don't really know parking signs. Well, you guys probably, for, that they, I think they're, I was surprised. Yeah.
There's cars that people got drunk.
All right, that's the other again, just see if you have any questions.
About thinking of carpet really quickly, as we have all the. So those vehicles, I don't think.
Fred, bring your group back together, yeah. And let's just see if we have any questions or concerns. I hope all, I hope those sub, two subgroups picked cities that they were going to be contacting. Um, any questions? Everyone knows where they're going with this. Um, in August, we want to hear back from these, uh, each of the subgroups and then, you know, I'll be talking to Maria and Rebecca, we'll see what we can do with your, okay, with your subgroups.
I don't have a subgroup right now.
I know, yeah, I know.
But no, I had a pseudo one that worked great.
Well, maybe the pseudo one.
Yeah.
So anyway, we'll, we'll talk about, we'll, we'll work something out for you guys. Okay, so, do you know what you're bringing back to us in August? It's not a final report, it is just what you have covered. So between now and August, our next meeting is, I always forget the date. August eighth. You're going to have something to present to us about how far you've gone and what you've accomplished. So, you know, if we get a good idea, we hear it and, um, you know, give you comments, feedback back. So, you know, we have a few minutes left over. Uh, we're kind of curious about some of our guests that came and like, why? And without putting you on the spot at all, we'd love to meet you.
Hey, I'm sorry. Did you address who, did I miss it? What are, what was the chosen thing to add?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement was the chosen, so all the others fall off right now?
Well, they, they don't fall off, we're going to, you know, we're going to count out their zip, have our, and then put them in order against what we work on in January.
Okay, so they're not in any order right now? It's just code enforcement, so all the other things.
Code enforcement was the first, the most voted on for today, so.
Right, and you're not identifying what the second most voted on?
No, we haven't.
Okay, sorry, okay, that's okay.
Because we're not going to work on that until.
I know, I just wondered, the exercise, so we had a lineup, but no, no.
So, gentlemen, I mean, we know Frank from Visi Gilroy and Jane, former Visi Gilroy, and Terrence Citizen, he's on two of our commissions. But just go down, I mean, are you comfortable?
Yeah, oh, yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so I'm a, I'm a, uh, I've been a resident of the Bureau since then, uh, local, tech, very, very excited about the future of downtown. Uh, so I was talking to Brad and folks in this committee, the possibilities are endless. We have, we have such great potential in this town. Um, I would say, my daughter goes to San Eric's Catholic school, my son goes to La Salle, I still mentor. Lowest down, and I'm really looking really forward to, for you. What are your thoughts?
And you know, I want to interject something, uh, you're right, forgive it. Um, as a guest, all of you are welcome to come on any subgroup that you want and help out. That is perfectly okay. You just, you know, won't be presenting to council, but you certainly, you know, would have say, or you don't participate in any votes of this committee, but please, you know, all of you feel free, you know, just say, oh, I worked on this, but this was really exciting.
I'll refer the best committee, all three.
Yeah. On the alcohol. After a crazy expectation from your group, Brad, our bar is really running down. Okay.
Yes.
My name is, I'm from, from Nerf Wars, I actually graduated from York High in nineteen ninety one, uh, I went to a American college, worked for years, and you were, and you have a public son who's a support, it's better. I decided to leave San Jose after I become a colleague, but I still have time to hear, uh, my brother almost, uh, I'm kind of packing, because he's very bored, and, uh, I just, uh, I'm serious, I'm not having any in the world, when I heard about the downtown, you know, kind of, thank you, your York. And I didn't present, I'm kind of scared, I think I should go for a. Work once in a while, and, uh, I feel, you know, this is a long, it's a, uh, we do have experience with that, this kind of projects, uh, my, my firm, I don't know, if I represent, we designed the first park at San Jose, called Friday the Fund, because before that, they saved the fund, and it was a, and it was a very successful kind of project, and it was a, it's like, prior to actually other works, and now, actually, they're going to attempt, they're actually, some business owners go online, and say, I'm a partner, and I'm on the tenth of the year, and, uh, you know, the kind of, anyone who signed it, and it was a great program that took, took, to experiment with some people. Uh, also, you know, we make, uh, work for, you see some of these communities or blocks that need, you know, the organization, and we're working to get, kind of, a number of ideas, so, uh, I mean, communities, right? Obviously, we did recently was, uh, dilapidated, you know, art, and I was saying, between two buildings that I'm making for, you know, digits, and it was, you know, homeless there, a lot of glass, a variety of, and, and, developers have been building for two years, but in the meantime, you wouldn't do that on my, my show, so they invested about two, three months, and then it was, and we have been to a very nice apartment, hilarious, and for their souls, they go in and talk their thoughts, and it's become again, uh, vibrant, then that, and simply I can take anything, like, it was the president, private, as well, where you want to do something that's smart, while they're doing kind of, to, 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 so anyways, we have experience, uh, to judge, and I do, it's on the board, it's hard to say that, I'm, so it's worth, and it's, it's, it's.
Agent Carter?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Have you come across these cities that have applied, what are your home apartments?
Oh, God.
That's a case now, now, yeah.
I know they have, it's, it's, uh, they, they, they do have a light, uh, for, for, maybe so, but, uh, they, they're possible, right, they're, but now it's time to, to, to learn that.
Oh, thank you, yes, are you ready to come back?
I will.
Good, thank you. All right, yes.
Uh, the, the, I'm a, I'm a part of a community strong strategy.
What is it, what do you mean?